Twenty fifteen, seven p.m. Our invocation today will be done by Alphano Newman.
Let us pray. Father, how we thank you, Lord, this day. Father, how we thank you for life itself. Father, we thank you for the rains that have come. Father, we thank you for those that have gone through us. Father, we ask those that are in harm's way, that we keep them safe. Father, we also ask that you would be with us council tonight. Father, as we meet, at our government, as we ask for your blessings from all of the state, county, and city, and all the cities that are made here tonight will be done with wisdom and on site, and for all that is concerned, all in particular, precious and many, pray. Amen.
Here we have established a forum, Councilman DeHalle, Councilman Ortiz, Councilman Gereto, Councilman Rodriguez, and Councilman Nieto will be here shortly. Now, everyone will please stand for the Federal Legions and the Texas.
Federal Legions to the right, from the United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this time, Alphano, entertain any citizens' comments?
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. All right.
Jim Alphano, last night, one is in the day, is simply a scheduling of the valuations for city manager, and possible contract extension. I just wanted to be thinking about that, she's very ready to do it. And I have worked with her on planning the zoning commission, she's done a super job. Excellent knowledge, a great deal of information about city growth and city planning. I've worked with her through the budgeting, and her leadership for the city, although last couple years, over the times she's been here, has really helped us to move on in financial situation for the city. And finally, this week, we saw the culmination of work and her staff work on the USDA grant and loan, great good leadership there. So, just a lot of good things to say about her. Hope to give her a good evaluation and continue her.
Mayor, City Council, I'm Doug Jones, and I'm president of Florisville Parks Foundation. The foundation sold two hundred and ninety-four out of tickets. It looks like in other nature, bought the biggest ticket of all. We raised approximately twenty-five hundred dollars, and I don't have to write down to the pin, because I haven't yet got our expenses taken out of it. Our leading salesperson, Lee Watanhat, Mayor Garza, first sold one on thirty-five of those four hundred and ninety-four. Tuesday morning, the mayor, city manager, the secretary, the comptroller, and Mr. Baker threw five names in the raffle room. The winners in order of the drawing, Diana Salazar, Madison Fieney, Dr. Mary Ruth Moore, Audrey Lewis, and Reggio Fittinelli. All were contacted before the cancellation of the Texas Tulun Spectacular announcement was made. They will be contacted with information concerning their use of their tickets, because Mr. Kuntz had guaranteed that those tickets would be valid for upwards of a year. We reschedule for October sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and we just looked at the calendar, and it looks like that's the weekend after European Festival. I'd like to express foundations' thanks to all who purchased a ticket, for supporting the foundations. And I would be remiss if I didn't also thank Tractor Supply, McCoys, and Walmart for allowing us to sit out front of their store and solicit their customers. On a personal note, I served on active duty in the United States Air Force for twenty-eight years, eleven months and seven days. I then gave another seven years of a civil service. My service to America was my offer of my life to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. My right to opine in private or public, as an individual or as a representative of the Florisville Parks Foundation is a constitutional guarantee. Should I say or do something that offends anyone, I request that the defendant refrain from running to the city council or any city official, rather than, rather that he or she contact me. And let's get those nodes belt buckle to belt buckle, and sort out what was thought to be offensive. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna skip around a little bit, and I'm gonna go straight to the American Legion proclamation, because I know you'll have meeting right now also. Ms. DeHalle? You wanna talk a little bit about, and then I'll read it.
Mayor, do you have your proclamation you're gonna read for us, or are you gonna come down? If you could come down and enjoy this here. We do have our ladies in our American Legion Auxiliary here, along with Ms. Poppy. This is Anna Maria Diaz, Anna Barber. Would you come up here, please? She has her present there. Also, this is Poppy Month, because this is the National Month of May, that memorialize our veterans. And because of our veterans, we are able to be able here in free assembly and have this time together. Because of our veterans, it's what they have to die for, but that's a habit we've got. So, we think it's very important that this be a time to do that. So, if you don't mind, would you like to take it down?
Let me read it first. Okay. Okay, proclamation, Poppy Day. Were asked if Florisville American Legion Auxiliary Unit Thirty-Eight adopted the poppy as its memorial flower, and whereas by wearing the poppy, Americans everywhere, and especially in the city of Florisville, can pay tribute to their war dead and the living by assistance to the veterans and their families in time of need. And whereas the Poppy Day program contributions are used solely for the programs of veterans' rehabilitation and child welfare in our community and state. And therefore, I, Mayor Diana Garza of the city of Florisville, Texas, do hereby proclaim May twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen, Poppy Day, and urge all citizens to recognize and support the Florisville American Legion Auxiliary Unit Thirty-Eight in our community. Witness my hand and seal of Florisville on this fourteenth day of May.
Thank you. To welcome back everybody also, because on the twenty-fifth of this month of Memorial Day, there will be an event at the American Legion Hall across the street. There will be free hot dogs and hamburgers, I understand, and homemade ice cream, for any that want to come over and visit our veterans on that day. And there will be a program on the lawn, Dr. Willie doesn't still rain, at ten a.m. If not, it'll be moved inside. So, everybody is invited to come over and join with our veterans. And now, ladies, y'all come join us, I'll be here to get a picture.
All right. I'm gonna do two with this one, and then two with mine. You ready, folks?
All right.
Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Okay. And then we have the one, two, three. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody. Okay, with that, I'd like to go to three A, consideration in action to approve the proclamation for the American Legion. Do I can have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the proclamation.
Okay, you have a second?
I second.
Yeah, this time, before we take a vote, do we have any citizens' comments? Okay, with that, Councilman DeHalle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, five zero. Thank you. Okay, now, we're gonna go back and try. We'll be, one O, one O business, A, consideration in action to approve meeting minutes for regular council meeting on August the ninth. Oh, I'm sorry, April ninth.
I have a question about the, item two A, and that still has to do with the agency, to approve the agency. And I think we had agreed that we would choose more than one, correct?
It is not limited to the former district.
Okay, is there a way to, to put it in there, to? Because it just says that we made a motion to select an agency for an event sponsored by the city of Florisville. The motion was seconded.
Okay, that was the understanding, I think, of acceptance, but the maker's motion and the seconder's motion, that's everybody's representation, would be safe.
I think during the presentation of the voting, we made clear that it wasn't exclusive.
Right. Now, I'm just saying, if everybody consents with that, we can put the minutes in there, but without somebody's consent, it's like.
Because the motion, I, I, I look back on this, and I mean, there was a discussion on it, and we all discussed, but I want to put in the motion.
Okay.
It's simply that, make the motion, please, or recommend the motion, if this is being accepted, with the understanding, which you're gonna have to come to the people, that this is not to be exclusive.
Okay, then I'll move, make the motion to recommend that the selection of the agency...
Minutes should reflect.
That the minutes should reflect.
With the understanding of the mayor, and the seconder, and the council, that this is not necessary.
Then I'll go and recommend, make the recommendation that, that the minutes reflect that the maker and the seconder's motion.
And the council vote.
And the council vote, that.
Not necessarily.
That's not necessarily exclusive.
And now, you can ask your colleagues, if somebody will second.
Is that correct?
Will you agree with?
Yeah. Last thing. Thank you.
Okay, a motion by Councilman, does that mean that the minutes are also included with all the features? Can I give a motion for that?
Now, since I voted against the motion primarily, does that reflect?
It reflects, as I did at that time tonight, so that if I said that, it would be exclusive.
Okay.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Ortiz, seconded by Councilman Gereto. Do we have any citizens' comments on that? Okay, Councilman DeHalle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Okay, now, we're gonna go on to item one B, consideration in action to approve meeting minutes for regular council meeting on April the twenty-third.
And on that motion, did we just, we accepted the remainder of the minutes, correct?
Correct. I understood you were only addressing that one.
Correct.
So, I believe the motion now would be formal, but accept the rest of the minutes with that minute.
Okay. For that, for that.
Make the motion to approve the minutes with corrections taken. Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Gereto, seconded by Councilman Ortiz to accept the minutes as written in the amendment. Councilman DeHalle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, five zero. Thank you. Now, someone will make a motion on the minutes for the twenty-third. Mr. Hart, change this. Okay, I have a motion by Councilman DeHalle. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Gereto. Okay, Councilman Ortiz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Nieto?
Upstate.
Okay, Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, four zero. Okay. Now, we're gonna go on to item two B, the Reos Family Confirmation. Councilman DeHalle?
You wanna read the proclamation? And actually, it's the, we use the Barsonis confirmation under reasons like this. Pedro Lopez Barson, born November twenty-sixth, eighteen ninety-seven, in Gillette, Texas. Inez, said earlier, was born in La Soya, Texas, on April twentieth, eighteen ninety-five, in December seventh, nineteen nineteen, in Yorktown, Texas. Whereas after marriage, a good dweller, Texas, Pedro and Inez had four children, Virginia, Ifolinto, Marialito, and Lucy. In May of nineteen twenty-four, dweller, Texas, Pedro began working for the State Highway Department. The State Highway Department created and maintained roads all for Texas, and Pedro's family traveled often. In nineteen thirty-one, another John transfer sent Menzo Inez and the four children to Mexico, Texas, and then approved state in Stockdale, Texas. In nineteen thirty-two, the family made their final move to Floriso, Texas, where they resided permanently until, and on November twenty-sixth, nineteen sixty-one, Pedro retired at age sixty-four. Whereas the city of Floriso has recognized contributions in nature and community, and is proud to name a city street, Barsonis Street. Whereas the Barsonis family is a united family, and it grows stronger every day. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Diana Garza, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May twenty-fourth as the Barsonis Family Day in the city of Floriso. I hope they will accept the proclamation.
Second.
Okay. That's gonna be going on to item three B, motion by Councilman DeHalle, seconded by Councilman Ortiz. May I have your vote, Councilman Nieto?
Yes.
Councilman Gereto?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yeah.
Motion carries, five zero. Thank you. Okay, now, we're gonna go on to item two C, city secretary's report. Ms. Monica?
Yes, I was just, I wanted to bring it over, I've got the election calendar, so y'all can go over the dates. You know, I will come back in July and get the early voting dates officially, but this is what, you know, July twenty-fourth is when we start signing for the, for the positions that are available, Council Place Three, Council Place Four, and Council Place Five. Over the election. So, and then you have early voting, you have, you know, um, oh, I thought you were leaving.
No, I was telling you, three, four, and five.
Yeah, three, four, and five. Yeah, are available, you know, over the election. So, don't leave it, leave it once, twice. So, and then also, we will be, you'll see, the second item on here is the agreement with the school. The school has come to us and asked if we would run their election, because they are having an election this year, and they have no machines, they have no, you know, anything to hold their election. So, I believe the last time the city did their election, so this is just in our local agreement with the school on doing their elections. I would provide the, you know, they would pay us, it would just, you know, with, I think it was a thirty, thirty percent on that, is that what they put you? On top of whatever fees part, or anybody charges us for renting, I would have to rent the ballot machines and the, and the other, for the automatic voting.
That's where you're administrating.
Yeah, all the administrative cost, and then whatever extra, because I'll have to hire the girls, extra girls to be here, because we will have it separate. They'll be in the same room, but I have to do theirs completely separate. And later on in the, in the agenda, will I have, we, for, to approve the...
And we're gonna agenda right too. Does anybody have any questions for Monica? If not, I'm gonna go on to item three J, which is consideration in action to approve the FISD joint election agreement. Van the motion on that?
What are the details of the, of the agreement?
The, I mean, we would provide, you know, the election, you know, their election, in accordance with the election code, and notify the election judges, and do, you know, all the duties that others.
But it's a one, a hundred percent reimbursement, correct?
Yes, and a thirty percent administrative on top. It's not a even pass for any.
And this is for, for November?
Yes, the November third.
The education code has been amended to require combination or blind elections where possible, and so in your elections in November in the past, you pick your back on the.
But they have their own staff that will monitor their portion of it?
They will do, they will approve their ballots, they will take in all of their applications, they will do all that portion of it. I would just be ordering ballots and, and, and providing the staff here for early voting and election day. And ordering, and getting the machines, because we already have accounts set up. We get the, we'll get the machines and everything is free.
So, so they will not be doing election day themselves? To help you with register stuff?
Yeah.
Will they have separate ballots?
Yes, they'll be separate ballots. Everything will be separate, so, like, you know how we set up here, and, and our machines, all our stuff, I'll just have them set up at the back, so.
But, but our question is also, are they gonna have the staff doing every?
No, I, it will be part of what I, the people are like.
It's pretty well laid out on your item one there on the page, one point one, one point two, who's doing what, who? Starts off there, in accordance with the election code, and to ensure it, the Secretary of State will appoint an election judge. And in one point two, notify the election judges in accordance with fourth one, number seven, and then three, and Dr. Vonmore Election Schools, and the Kentucky Judges, Time Places, and so forth, in the schools. Four, in accordance with the election code, and a text of, uh, or six provisions to determine the ballot format and voting system. Five, the range for the program, range should add program to the ballot. Six, the range for the budgets that link the notice. Seven, the computer and distributed necessary election supplies. Eight, computer that voting machines and equipment. Nine, the range for Southern County, and hopefully the key legislation states, the population right now. Ten, obtain the motorization stations, so we can check on. Eleven, supervised rule of conduct. Twelve, prepare electric configuration. Thirteen, submit election night return. And fourteen, post the notice of election, or any runoff as applicable, and then obviously consolidate the precincts as applicable on the voting board proposal. And then the duties of FISD is up to two, upon the quest of city by decision, information in human, according to secure, two, certified in writing, the language of the ballot, and that's both in English, and I think in Spanish, in other recorded languages. And then three, compensation, compensation billing and payment, as the market just described, basically set out in two point one. And then performance and duties and services of the equipment, show favor to city, compete ten percent of the total amount of the contract, and that must concern five dollars. And as soon as reasonably possible, after the election, a runoff to city will submit an item on invoice, for actual expenses, and the city's need described in three, two. And Monica, I see ten percent, if you're not fifty percent.
Yes, very much.
Okay. Three, four, city's invoice that you do in table, by the FISD to address that portion of the invoice, which we have presumed, City Hall, and then provisions for early voting, and acknowledgement, and six, jump again, acknowledgement of the election, and withdrawal election under the different section of the election code, two seven one, under all works you're in, and these may arrange to similar things in the future. And then general provisions, you have seven on the next page, um, what you can, but then we, let me jump in, six, seven, point two, the city is the agent of FISD, of contract with the third party, with respect to election expenses, which means if you contract with third parties, the school disposals completely reverse them. And seven, four, on the actual expenses directed to the contract, including administrative fees will be charged, and, and the English below are the, the contact person, meaning Mr. Pernod is the city secretary contact person, and for FISD, it's rate of payment.
I thought it was supposed to be one of that change to the shared base.
Okay.
So, the question again comes to, we have to hire the staff for them also?
Yes.
We have to, we have to keep them both apart for them, but their staff would not have anything to do with our election.
Right, so they will pay whatever the fees of the past, and they're gonna get a ten percent administrative fee to be able to do that. So, whatever it costs to the machinery, whatever it costs, they pay their fair share, and then a ten percent administrative fee on top.
Monica, would it be separating totally?
Correct. So, it's up to. But he's, since I'm not the mayor along with election, school election, Bill said he would be available to come in, and if there's any questions or anything, they will answer all of those questions. It's just the staff. Like, election day, I have six people here, I have to have six more on their side, and we have to keep it separate.
This, this, for the subject of the voter, for your constituents, it skips from having the two separate buildings, or two separate locations at maybe differing times, so somebody come in and do, try to keep all the, one place here, you'll be here in that place, and get it all there and send that.
I'm gonna guess that, just to make sure the rear will keep it separate.
Yeah.
Right, it's gonna be sep, we have to have separate boxes, separate everything, it's not gonna be part of ours.
This is just like the CST brand, we gotta have a separate place for FISD, and we gotta have a separate place for Florida, for Florida. And so, related matters, we do something for them, they do something for us. Right, Monica?
Okay, select a vote.
I still move to approve the FISD joint election.
With the stipulation on that one, maybe you will.
With the stipulation of adding Sherry Bay.
Sherry Bay.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion by Councilman Nieto, seconded by Councilman Ortiz. Councilman Gereto, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilman Ortiz?
Yes.
Councilman DeHalle?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, five zero. Okay, now, we're gonna go on to two D, annexation. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Garza, and Council, good to see you all again. I have a little PowerPoint presentation that I wanted to do for you. I'm here to talk about, just kind of, on a basic level, about annexation, and my recommendation, based on my prior work in the planning zoning commission, on developing a future land use plan, and then my subsequent work with the city staff and city attorney's office, in kind of refining some of the strategies, so we can start looking at some of these issues. Start the presentation.
All right, the first, you know, the first global question we have to ask is, why are we interested in? are we interested in annexing territory? Why would we wanna do that?
Well, in many cases, um, our cities have already been providing services such as water, sewer, uh, street maintenance, uh, police protection or fire protection. We're providing those services directly to property, and in most cases, uh, where we expect to do that is through the process, and we have an interest in, in annexation. There are also cases where we are indirectly providing, uh, city services. Uh, this typically comes up as, we're providing police protection and fire protection, um, because it makes sense, uh, based on, uh, how emergency services response is, and it's that, uh, that we would, we would serve certain areas before, uh, county sheriff would be called in. Another indirect way in which, uh, properties that are not inside the city limits are actually served, uh, is through land use controls and some of the other regulations that are covered by county government. For instance, if you have a piece of property, uh, that is inside the city limits and has, uh, had zoning, uh, that applies to it, and next to it is a property that is outside of the city limits, property outside the city limits is then is going to be benefited from those land use controls, from that zoning ordinance control over the property that is inside the city limits. So, there's kind of a fairness argument there, uh, that, that we need to take into account when we're, we're thinking about annexation. All right, so there's, uh, there's different approaches to annexation, um, they're, they're all laid out in, uh, chapter forty-three of Local Government Code. Um, I have three names for them, whether it's the carrot approach, the hammer approach, what I call the beekeeper approach. Um, the carrot approach is, uh, it's a voluntary process. This is where a landlord recognizes that, uh, in the course of their development, uh, that they're gonna benefit from the services the city has to offer, and therefore, uh, wants to request a petition, uh, for the annexation. That's a voluntary process, and, uh, there's a process by which it can go very straightforward, uh, and, uh, those properties can become incorporated into the city. Um, there is a, uh, there's a process called municipal annexation plan, it has its own subchapter in Local Government Code. This is probably one of the most crazy, uh, chapters of Local Government Code that there is, although there may have some better examples, but, um, this has its own subchapter, and this is the way that the legislature really wants cities to annex, if they're gonna annex it all. They want you to do a three-year plan, where you identify now, uh, at the time you adopt your plan, what you're gonna annex over the next three years, and then, as you move through that three-year period, you conduct those annexations, um, according to the process that they have laid out in subchapter C, and, uh, that's the clean, unique way, uh, to do it. The problem is, is that cities are always, uh, behind, kind of behind the, the ball in, uh, getting a municipal annexation plan adopted and underway, and by the time you get it underway, it's, it's already out of date in terms of what we really need to be doing to respond to what's happening, um, at the edges of your city limits. Okay? Um, so there is an exception, there, there are some exceptions that are written into the law, um, that lets you, uh, use a subchapter C-one process, which is slightly different than the subchapter C process, and you don't wanna get hung up on that, um, but just understand that there's an exception to the municipal annexation plan. The criteria for any annexation, regardless of, um, unless it's, I guess, if it's voluntary, it can be, doesn't have to be a thousand foot wide, but it needs to be contiguous to your current ci, city limits, that means it needs to be touching your current city limits in some way. Um, it needs to be a minimum of a thousand foot wide and less than ten percent of your total area per year. There are other criteria as well, but those are the ones that, um, that really, you have to think through with your strategy. There's another provision of the code, um, that relates to properties that are inside your ETJ, your extraterritorial jurisdiction, um, this is what I call the beekeeper, uh, beekeeper strategy, where, um, if there's an agricultural exemption or a timber exemption here out in East Texas, um, these properties have to be offered through development agreements, okay? And the idea behind that is that we wanna preserve our rural heritage, um, in the state of Texas, we wanna allow agricultural communities to, uh, properties to continue that agricultural, uh, function, that's part of our, uh, part of our heritage. This development agreement guarantees, uh, that property continues in CQJ status until it's ready to develop. It authorizes all regulations that do not interfere with the use of the properties for ag, wildlife management or timber, our exempt exemption is, is taken. Um, and once that agreement is executed, the property is considered to be contiguous. So I call this the beekeeper because we're kind of, we're allowing it to, it's like the, the bee hive, we're, we're, we're allowing it to do its thing, to be there and operate as the ag property, and we're just working around the edges, whenever, whenever the property's ready to develop, i.e. give us some honey, then we can go in and, and, uh, the agreement spells out how that, uh, incorporation will take place. But that's the, uh, that's one key division, and it's a key in mind. So those are our three strategies, and obviously, um, our favorite strategy is the carrot, right? We wanna, we wanna use the carrot, we don't wanna have to use the hammer, nobody wants to have to do that. Um, but let's take a look here quickly, if, uh, I'm hoping the contrast will be a little better, that's my fault, I picked the wrong colors. Um, the blue line represents our city limits as of June two thousand eleven, and it's approximately the same as what it is right now, we're in, in the process of, uh, updating that map, that two thousand eleven map, and, uh, making sure that we have all the right properties accounted for. The extraterritorial jurisdiction is the purple line on the outside, and that is a mile, um, outside of every corner of the city limits, and that's how we define the E-TJ. All right, when we were looking at the future land use plan, we identified kind of five priority areas that we wanted to, uh, put out, and this was really, uh, directed at where we saw the growth coming, uh, where we wanted it to be, and, uh, in terms of, where we wanted to be in terms of being caught up with that growth. And so the first priority area that we had was, uh, out one eighty-one to the north, um, out towards the, uh, basically to the business one eighty-one, um, and one eighty-one, um, that intersection up there. That was our priority number one. Our priority number two was, uh, ninety-seven, uh, to the west or south, uh, towards the river. Uh, number three was, uh, one eighty-one south, number four was ninety-seven east, and number five, the five priority area was kind of out towards the industrial park. Okay, so that's what we looked at in, in the future land use plan. Since, uh, we've also had, uh, staff has had a number of discussions with, uh, with the county about some of these areas that are, where we've got the little dog legs or the little notches, that it's hard for, uh, county staff and, and city staff to always know where, what's handled, what's out, um, and then could we get these kind of, these things kind of cleaned up? And so, that should happen, we, we wanna make sure that that happens over time, um, it's just a question of what strategy do we apply? So we may think about picking up some of those in our municipal annexation plan, where it's not as necessarily as critical for us to get out on top of that, uh, that growth, that growth. Uh, so my recommendation in looking at this originally was, um, to start working up, in two, start working in those, uh, those two areas, the two priority areas, north on one and, uh, west on ninety-seven. So, uh, north on one eighty-one, it's got a lighter green shade of areas that, uh, if, that are currently ag exempt, and that we could offer a non-development, a non-annexation development agreement to those property owners in order to become contiguous, have a contiguous city limits, uh, through that beekeeper process out to the Richardson development. Also, adjacent to that is a Forest Elias E property, um, which, uh, I'm, I'm thinking we could probably work something where that happened, the carrot growth, and that was voluntary, okay? So that's one way of getting, uh, out to the north that doesn't require using the hammer. We don't have to use the hammer, we can handle this, uh, with the tools we have and keep things, for the most part, the way they are. The second kind of phase of that would be out ninety-seven where the convention center, there's only two properties between the edge of the city limits there and the convention center, those are both, uh, under an ag exemption, again, we can offer that development agreement, allow them to continue to be their agricultural use under that agreement until they're ready, and at that point, uh, we are contiguous, and, uh, we're pretty sure we can get a voluntary annexation on the convention center. But that's the strategy that, um, that I've kind of put forward here for, uh, through my visits with staff, um, and city attorney, and, uh, I wanted to discuss with you guys and, uh, get some info.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes?
Going on the one eighty-one point, you said it through the Richardson property where the school district is, what about the property that's after Richardson, that's gonna be developed again?
Um, I hadn't discussed that particularly, about, we kind of, for discussion purposes, we, we talked about Richardson, but, you know, once we hit to Richardson, then, um, then our city limits is there, we're contiguous to, presumably be contiguous to what, uh, so we can, uh, work with those, that property owner to maybe request voluntary annexation so that they perceive police, uh, police response of that, um, that's a, should be a pretty big plus for them. All right, so this, um, with the aerial background, you can kind of see it a little bit better. Um, there's also a second option, um, that we could follow, we could do this all at the same time, and offer act, uh, uh, the non-annexation development agreements to properties there, uh, directly on one eighty-one, um, that's just adjacent to where I think the CBS is looking at going. And so we have some, we should have contiguous city limits in that area, but let's have other, anything to open that to. And then south, this is just a little bit more detailed to what I was talking about with the, the, uh, the properties, uh, before we get to the convention center. All right, uh, so as I mentioned at the beginning, the, the subchapter C-one spells out, um, spells out a process that we have to follow if we're going to, uh, use the C-one process, okay? And what that means is, um, it says we've gotta have two public hearings, um, and you've gotta have, uh, notice that is done, um, prior to those meetings, each of those meetings, um, you have two readings of the ordinance, and then we can recommend effective date. What I've developed here is to kind of say, okay, this is, this is what's possible, this is, this is doable, um, under our current calendar, um, is, uh, we can get through this process, um, if we have to, um, by, uh, by mid-September, and then we can say, set the effective date to be January, so that this kind of, we would have to, uh, complete all of our filings by Thanksgiving essentially, in that case, but we would be looking at a hearing at the very end of July, and another, in the second hearing at the very beginning of August. So that's the, this is a, uh, what I have here is a newer version of the calendar, um, that we worked up, um, late last week to come up, I think, balance out y'all's meeting schedules, I know summer is very, uh, very much a budget, crazy time of year, um, but this, this schedule was, uh, will, will meet the requirements of subchapter C-one, and so I wanted to put that out for y'all's consideration. So, um, that's, with this plan of action, what, what the properties would be looking at to, to coordinate? Well, if, what we could do is, uh, we can set up this process, and, um, it looks like we can get there if we have all of those properties willing to, uh, willing to go between...
You're talking about north and south?
We can do north and south, you can, you can, you can do north now, you can do south later, um, but if we're, we've got it all, we've got one schedule, we can do, um, we can do north and south at one time.
And are we prepared, from the city standpoint, to, to provide infrastructure when, when the point that time comes?
Well, when they're using the requested infrastructure, you know, the new law is that we have to provide infrastructure after three years. However, we're trying to go ahead and talk to the attorney, they say that they have to request it, and the focus going north is towards Richardson, and we do realize that the development is going further, but one of the things that you did, that the council approved, was to have Richardson to be, uh, city streets and things such as that, and just record that it's already the city, we act as if it's already the city that it is now. And so our main goal is to go get Richardson's, and I love the way the beekeeper is right now, the hammer is coveting me, and I don't know how to be nice, but what we're trying to do with the carrot is that contiguous, once we touch them on one side, so we're gonna ask everybody around the way from Walmart on, those registered at the front of, um, one eighty-one, business, among, among the girl, the big one eighty-one. And if you imagine a coys on one side, and Walmart on the other, and head north towards San Antonio, all those properties, we're gonna ask them, but I think we're going to see some trouble, and I don't have a long time to do this. And so, the other way we're trying to approach is along business with one eighty-one, the agricultural properties, it doesn't affect them to be part of our city now, their taxes are not going to be affected. And so, once we touch them, which do include the school district, we, the school district of recent, we've had conversations with them, then we can actually touch Richardson and then we can annex them freely. Now, we looked at some of the, uh, ordinances that we didn't do back then, but they did say in the public hearing, at the C and B meeting, that they wanted to annex. Richardson wants to be part of us, I know the mayor and I were there, I found Richardson for the first time, they told me to go down like a dog in San Antonio, when you see the cow, it's opposite the cow. So, that's really close, so we need, we always pretend to be, so that's what we're gonna do. So the front door would be one eighty-one, the back door is gonna be business of one eighty-one. I think we touch them on one side, then they can firmly annex, and we can be the beekeeper, keep everybody together, it's nice and buzzy, we can keep everybody together, but it doesn't ever affect them, because sometimes annexation can be a little territorial, and you've taken over, and now the city's coming to what to do, it doesn't apply any, so they need to stay where they are, and then, when they are ready, we can provide those facilities, which we're looking at doing right now anyway, as we're looking at, and we've talked to uphill water and sewer, so we can provide those. Now, going to the secondary is the event center, we're providing water for them now, those people are thinking about five or six houses, are actually paying a double water bill.
Take trash too, right?
Uh, they're paying for their own trash disposal, but yes, we're charging them a double water bill and on their sewer, so in the secondary, basically, we're providing the facilities already, which is really, really key, if I can stick to this one second, council, that we have to get our, um, boundaries defined, so that we can actually have our CCN, where we service water, that it actually is truly reflective, because we serve a lot more people than we have on the farm, and so we need to be able to do that, and annexation kind of ties into that, and we need to be able to do that, and we're gonna be working with the three-year plan, with the county saying going forth. So what we're asking for tonight, and there is, I think, item K, is to say, yes, that sufficiently go forward, and let's start this process, I believe, Chris, help me out, you said two public hearings, correct?
That's right.
So those two public hearings we have to do, but the first thing we have to do is to get the council to officially say and direct staff, go forward and start this annexation process, to have the hearings, to sign out the notices, and it took a little while to figure out what all those equations are, but if you look there, it says CF, CF, that's the, so that's worth, and then FPC, that's the name of the day, new consultant. So he has a lot of work to do, signing out the notices, we have to make sure, because there's two portions. two portions in a paragraph and a one seat, that we stop at everything along the way and do it properly for reference to those, so he's taking on that responsibility. Now, one of the things the county's gonna say is that the county's trying to all this zigzag puzzle, in and out, you know, Roper's is in, the Dunn's is out, Ake is in, you know, that kind of thing we need to stop. And so hopefully we can address some of those things and we make it one nice, pretty picture. Me and I had a conversation with C V S and they're going to further annex as well because McCord's touches them on that side. So we need to just make it a nice clean bubble so the maps don't go in and out with them, doesn't make sense. So hopefully we can address all of these things in this annexation process. So what we're asking for you all tonight is to officially tell staff, make the public notice that you are going to have these hearings and move forth with this annexation process. Once we're starting, the party people that we're going to be notifying will be the county, the accessories office, the school, we're gonna let everybody know that we're doing this process so that we can continue because it doesn't affect our everything.
Aren't you asking the council also to adopt a schedule like two D?
Yes, that is part of, in F we're at, the two, subject, schedule, could be council direction. So if you all wanna add anything or change, we will really listen for your opinion.
So you're saying at this point, there would be no financial cost as far as infrastructure or any extra manpower to maintain roads or anything for, for these additional properties?
There's no roads involved as of yet. The only road right now that we see is a road that's in Richardson that they drive with the state, going to the city street, they get to us at the steps. Our engineer can't say they accept it as a this right now because it's not enough to admit it, so we can't accept, we can't accept that with that knowledge. So the road is not an issue right now, probably to get the kids from the area going. They, they have already put in a septic tank, they have a septic field right now, they're expensive, their company's septic field. And so we're, Chris, you said that there was the, annexation said that if they need city service, we're collecting, we have to provide it for them. But at this time, they're not, they're just putting in their extensive septic tank, don't think they need like, I think it costs maybe forty, forty?
Thirty?
Twenty thousand dollars for the septic tank. We wanna get their money.